We're on.
Okay, Mayor, we are on, ready to go for the August 11th council meeting.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. Adequate notice at this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the town council on December 11th, 2019. The notice was on that date, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Council members Havegood?
Here.
Harmley?
Here.
LaGripo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dartia?
Here.
Boyce?
Here.
And now, if we'll all stand or do wherever you are for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so Jim?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have a few quick updates tonight. For me, a couple of road paving updates. So North Chestnut Avenue is actually in the process of being paved. We expect that job to be completed this week. In addition to that, we were able to get a small drainage project finished on the very end of May Street, right up down the street from North Chestnut. So that's worked out well. And North Chestnut actually is a job that is basically half the cost of the road paving job is offset by the county grant. So that's moving along, and thanks to Chris for overseeing that with our contractor. Scottish Plains Avenue, the state finally approved our documents. That road project is out to bid now. We are expecting responses back on September 3rd, so we hope to have on the September 8th meeting, I say September, candidate to award a contract to. And then we will move forward with that. And that job is basically completely offset, we think, based upon the bids to come in, with state aid money. So that's positive as well. And that's between, North Chestnut was the entire length of the road, South Avenue, or Scottish Plains Avenue is between South Avenue and Dorian. Also, on the paving front, a lot of roads, we had, on our website, there's a list of almost 40 roads that will be paved in full or sections by utility companies, mostly Elizabeth Town Gas. They have a lot of work they're doing in town. Unfortunately, some of the work, like lots of other things this year, became delayed because of the pandemic by not being able to go into people's houses in a timely fashion. But the good news is they've progressed. Some of their projects in certain grids are finishing up with the home service connection. So we will start seeing some road paving at no cost to the town being done by utilities, hopefully in the next month or two. And again, if you want to go to the website, there's a list of almost 40 roads to be paved by utility companies this year in full or most sections of road, hopefully if not by the fall, then early spring. So a lot of road paving will commence very shortly. Two other things to mention on the agenda. Tonight, we have a very busy agenda tonight, lots of things, and the mayor will touch on a lot of things. There's two things I wanted to highlight on the agenda, which have been projects that we've been talking about for some time. Sycamore Park, we are actually on the agenda tonight going to be awarding contract to buy new playground equipment for Sycamore. And so that will be awarded tonight. And then over the course of the next few months, we will work on removing the equipment that's there, installing new equipment, and working with the family of Terry DeFalco and friends to install a memorial for her as the neighbors have came to us earlier this year to recommend to us and was approved by the council. So that's a very exciting project. Also, on the very end of the agenda is a contract to be awarded to a company called Volta for EV charging stations. The Public Works Committee has been working with Chris, myself, and this new company. This is very exciting, too. We've actually applied for grants in the past for EV charging stations to be installed without some success, although we now found this company that, right now, the proposal is to have six EV charging stations installed in three of our municipal lots at no cost to the town. So that's exciting to get that process underway. And one last thing to mention for tonight, I figure I'll just mention this, Mayor, obviously, I'm sure people will be joining tonight to hear about the historic preservation. We have a presentation tonight by members of the Historic Preservation Commission. The ordinance that was originally advertised to be heard tonight, historic preservation orders will not be heard in that public hearing because that version of the ordinance is now going to be amended. So the, later on in the meeting, Councilman Mackey's committee, she'll make a motion to introduce a amended version of the historic preservation ordinance on first reading, which basically acts as amendment, it acts as a first reading, and then we are expected to schedule the public hearing on that version for September 8th. Obviously, there's a public comment portion tonight. People can, are welcome to make comments if they want to at that time. But just want to make sure everyone understood that there is an advertised ordinance tonight, but that version will not be heard because it's being amended and will be reintroduced tonight later on in the meeting. So that's what I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
Can I just ask one question regarding the, I got a few inquiries regarding the traffic light at Lambert's Mill and Raway. That project was originally slotted for this year. Residents have just asked you for an update, so just wonder if you had any updates.
I can just give a quick update. What we understand, Mr. McElhoun and I, our engineer, did receive information from the county that they're looking to go out the bid on that very shortly. So we'll have more information to share and hopefully with the Public Safety Committee later this month when we're meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
So as Jim mentioned, we do have quite a full agenda, and I do, when I give everybody an update, this also serves as my COVID update that I have been giving twice a week these days. So again, as just a reminder that any public comment will only be accepted via Zoom. So even if you're live streaming it on Facebook, you have to go on Zoom to submit questions. So just want to remind everybody of that. Today regarding COVID cases, there are 185,475 in New Jersey, another 660 are still under investigation, and the county has 16,749. Westfield has four new cases since my last update on Friday. It actually was one per day, bringing our total to 355. So I think we're at a manageable number. When we reopened, that's kind of what we're expecting, maybe one or two a day. So as long as we can keep it there, I think everybody feels fairly comfortable. On the good news, too, the state's transmission rate is now below one, which is a key benchmark. It's .94. It was at 1.49 on August 2nd, which brought a little bit of alarm to people. So that's good news. And it is also the 11th straight day that the state has announced fewer than 500 new cases after seeing that uptick that I mentioned. So that's all really great news. But yeah, we've had quite a lot going on, pandemics and storms. And I have to say, I have to give a huge shout out to our police, fire, and public works departments for getting us through the storm. I have to say, I feel like Westfield, both in terms of power and damage, really, we did pretty well relative to some of the surrounding towns and other mayors I've spoken to. So thank you all for your unbelievable effort. Chief Badalora, I think he did, was, they were reopening roads today. I think we have, all of our roads have been reopened. And according to PSENG, all local power has been restored. So that's fantastic news. I also want to thank maybe the residents who have been at the conservation center to deposit, to deposit storm debris. Just as a reminder that the drop-off window does not, does not require a permit, and it's been extended through Sunday, August 23rd, to make sure that everybody has broad access. And thank you to the many residents who have made these selfless offers to assist their neighbors in need. I want to give a special shout out to the lifelong Westfield team, especially co-chairs Brad Shinani and Deirdre Jeline, as well as Councilman David Contract and Lauren Harmer of the Rec Department. They all were coordinating debris pickup for senior citizens in need of assistance and picked up quite a few loads themselves. I know they were out this morning. I was actually out there with my son today. Picked up a few loads from some houses and greeted by many grateful seniors. So that was great. And on this topic of storm debris, I recognize that many residents have been very upset that the town is not picking up storm debris. It's something that we've only done three times in the past nine years, most recently after the Nor'easters in 2018, which quite frankly is what informed this decision. I do recognize that many surrounding towns are doing so. I've spoken to other mayors, and we actually fully anticipated this criticism when that would come our way if we did not. It was really, ultimately, it was a no-win situation for the town and residents based upon our experience in 2018. And a lot of people are assuming it was budget constraints, but it was actually more based on limited capacity than financial constraints, although that was a consideration in light of the budget cuts that we made due to the pandemic. But it is important to note, every town has different issues, resources, and capabilities. And I think it's important to note that in Westfield, we have over 7,500 town trees that are lining our streets that we, as a town, maintain in addition to more than the 10,000 trees in our town parks. So our DPW first has to secure all of our own town trees and do the cleanup from our responsibility before, and make sure everything is safe before we can even get to the street debris, which is something we contemplated we wouldn't be able to get to that debris for several weeks. So in that time, landscapers would likely dump their non-storm debris in the street, creating piles that become street hazards and inhibiting stormwater runoff. For those that you remember, this exactly happened in 2008. And if you recall, it led to tremendous amount of residential complaints about the piles in the streets. There's, I remember they were knee highs, chin high in some cases, and how long it took to do the pickup because of that. So and all other public works tasks were put on hold. So quite frankly, we all agreed it was a nightmare and one we didn't want to repeat unless absolutely necessary. But that being said, I do need to acknowledge that it is a hardship for us. We are lucky that we have this conservation center, but it is a difficult one. So we do need to figure it out in the future, and we fully expect that the frequency of these damaging storms is going to increase. So I'm going to ask the Public Works Committee to really assess what we can do and make recommendations for the future that can both do this, but also in an expeditious way, that isn't going to take two to three months, which only makes, compounds the problem. So we hear you, and thank you for your patience and cooperation. And I acknowledge it's not ideal, but we're doing the best we can. And thank you to everybody that has done, has already done their cleanup already. The good news, the storm did not impact any of the butterflies that you might have seen installed around town. And I do want to thank the Westfield Public Arts Commission for coordinating our launch of Art Takes Flight, really a remarkable inaugural event by a first-time-appointed Public Arts Commission, and really recognizing the talented artists behind the butterflies, which were, which were unbelievable, and also the generous sponsors who made this exhibit possible, because it's very important to note, no tax dollars were spent on this. It was all done through private donations, which is even more incredible considering it was the first, first event that this commission has ever done. So if you haven't done so, take a time, check out the Beatles exhibit through our downtown area. The map of where everything is is still on the website. And another big thing that the Arts Commission has done is the murals. So you may have noticed that the second half of the mural underneath the cross from the first one underneath the South Avenue underpass is almost complete. So it's incredible work by Ricky Roig. We're very, very lucky to have him as a local guy here, and it will be formally unveiled at a ribbon cutting in the coming weeks. But it's fantastic. It adds so much color to town. And then, let's see. I also, okay, oh, I also want to let everybody know what you may have seen. I don't know if anybody's been caught wearing a helmet, but we initiated a new bike safety task force, who is led by council members Dartia, Contract, and Katz. I did a little ride with them on Saturday morning. Did a great job kicking off this initiative, rewarding residents, resident, residents, oh, sorry, for the dogs with helmets, with vouchers to redeem prizes at local businesses. If you are caught wearing a helmet, remember, upload a photo of yourself and your voucher to our website, and you qualify for a grand prize and free bike donated by Jay's Cycle Center. So Out of Hand Pizza, Amico's, Donating Slushies, Manhattan Bagel, and Jay's also have been incredible supporters of this initiative. Also, I want you to know that we've got a COVID testing unit, that is a mobile testing unit that's coming to Westfield. I want to thank Regional Health Officer Megan Avalone for coordinating this with the county. So this mobile COVID testing unit is first going to be going to Westfield Senior Housing on August 20th, followed by Tomacus Park that same day. So details on that will be coming in the near, in the next few days. So thanks to Megan for coordinating that. Some of you may have heard that there's a Brightwood Park Bike, Park Bike Trail Information Center happening this week. It's on Thursday at 6:00 and Saturday at 11:00. So members of the Rec Commission, the Town Council, and JORBA, which is the Jersey Off-Road Bikeling Association, will be in attendance to discuss the recommendations from the strategic park plans regarding the possibility. Nothing's been confirmed. This really is about information. There's a lot of misinformation that's going out about what is being considered, but I think if people walk through the park and understand what the possibilities and potential are, I think it will give a little bit more understanding about how the effort is to improve the park and not diminish it. So as I mentioned a lot tonight, including the introduction of the proposed amendment to the historic preservation ordinance in response to residents' feedback, we have Historic Preservation Commission Chair Maria Boyce and Town Historian and Board Member Robert Wendell here, and they're going to provide a little presentation in more details. And I know there's been a lot of debate and a lot of back and forth about this ordinance, and ultimately, I'm sure, I will reckon some will not think that these changes go far enough. And I do find it really very unfortunate that the spirit of what we're trying to do seems to have been lost in this process and on many. It is, this ordinance is intended to protect the few truly iconic historic properties that remain from being demolished. And it really does sadden me to see the cynicism and politicization of some that has turned this into the notion that we're coming after your homes. As I said in my recent letter, most of us are sick of being known as the town of teardowns and having our historic homes demolished without the town even being notified, because they don't have to be. I have been asked over and over again why we don't do something about this. And now we are, as you'll see in Maria and Robert's presentation tonight. And I realize this ordinance revision may not be politically popular, politically popular by myself, and I think most of this council is committed to doing what is right and necessary to ensure the preservation of our town's architecture and history for future generations. And again, another presentation, we're welcoming back our redevelopment firm Topology tonight for a presentation about the eligibility of the Rialto and Lord &amp; Taylor properties to be designated as areas in need of redevelopment. Yesterday, I shared a letter about the status of the Lord &amp; Taylor property after last week's bankruptcy filing by its parent company, LeTote. It's important to remember that while LeTote is the one that filed for bankruptcy, the Lord &amp; Taylor property here in Westfield, totaling almost seven acres, is still owned by Hudson's Bay Company. And they, they will be the ones ultimately making the determination about what they want to do with their valuable real estate asset. I've gotten lots of comments, great comments about suggestions on what should go there, but it's important to remember it's private property, and they have their own obligation and desire to figure out, you know, their highest return on investment. So the good news is we've had an active dialogue with Hudson's Bay over the last two years in anticipation of exactly this scenario as the retail landscape had shifted, and this was well before the pandemic. So considering they're one of our largest taxpayers, we have a very vested interest in working with them to ensure that we maintain and ideally maximize the potential tax revenue from their site while capitalizing on its potential, I believe, to play a significant role in the transformation of our downtown. So tonight's anticipated redevelopment designation will provide us with the next steps to continue this dialogue and have an ongoing seat at the table with HBC as they explore their options. And lastly, on a light note, and a very, I think, encouraging and inspiring note, I want to thank a local student, Michael Noya, who reached out to me to ask if we could honor one of the oldest surviving World War II veterans who had lived in Westfield from 1963 to 2017. Peter Migliarini, now 94 and residing in Cranford, bravely served our country after being drafted at the age of 18, ultimately serving as a replacement at the Battle of the Bulge. He and his wife raised four children during their years in Westfield, all graduates of Westfield High School. Thanks to Michael, we recently presented Mr. Migliarini with proclamation honoring his service in advance of this week's 75th anniversary of the armistice of World War II. We're all, I think, very grateful for his service and for all those who served so bravely as part of the greatest generation. And lastly, before getting to tonight's business agenda, I do want to remind everybody that I will once again be enforcing Robert's rules this evening. And I think we learned via Zoom, it's particularly important and more difficult to maintain kind of structure and order to the evening. But I would need to be sure that we stay on topic and the meeting runs efficiently. I'm going to insist that any comments that are not relevant to the particular business at hand, I mean, the resolution ordinance we're discussing be deferred to after council committee reports, not in this meeting. And the public will only be allowed to comment during the public comment portion, and I will ask the council to refrain from asking questions or interjecting during the scheduled presentations. As the, as the presiding officer, I do have an obligation to manage these council meetings. I will do all that I can to ensure we stay on the agenda this evening, and we are not here till all hours. So with that, thank you for bearing with me. I think I'm going to hand it over to Topology. So Phil, I think you're up.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all this evening. I'm just going to share my screen. That's okay.
Was it Chris Colley who shaved, or it was somebody new?
Oh, that one. Yeah. That's not exactly what he looks like.
I have a, I work with Phil, with Topology.
It's too endearing. Okay, great. Is this visible to everybody? Good to go? Okay.
Yes.
So I'm going to go through this. This is a combination of two presentations that we gave to the planning board a couple of weeks ago now. To everybody's, for everybody's benefit, I sort of shortened them down and kind of got to the point on them, as we don't have as much time this evening as the planning board did during that special meeting. And really, this is, and the planning board hearing was the public hearing, and a lot of municipalities, you know, we don't always go through this at the council meeting, that they sort of take the recommendations of the council and, you know, pass their own resolution. But, you know, kind of fast forward and cutting to the chase, the planning board did recommend that all the properties in here, to, they recommended to the council that ultimately that these properties be designated. So I'm going to show you the presentation that they used to base that decision. So I know there hasn't been a ton of redevelopment in Westfield to date. So I do think it's worth going through the process for the benefit of the public and those who haven't, you know, seen this or been through this before. So this first part will be about process. And we're sort of at the end of the designation process of creating redevelopment areas under New Jersey law. I'm not going to go step by step through each one of these, but there was, this started back in March with a resolution. We had a hearing with the planning board on July 20th. They made a resolution and referred it back to you suggesting that these properties be designated. And so we have those two resolutions on for tonight, and those two properties are, are multiple properties, but two general redevelopment areas. One is the Rialto Theater, and the other are the collection of properties that are associated with Lord &amp; Taylor, both the, the main site of Lord &amp; Taylor, as well as the accessory parking lots across the street. So what did we do to prepare for tonight and to prepare the report that came with it? We did a number of site inspections. I happen to live nearby. I'm a mountainside resident, so I could always pop over, fly the drone, and take some pictures of properties. So that's what, that's what we did on a number of occasions. We basically reviewed everything possible that you had. Planners are always hungry for data and documents. So we annoyed Mr. Gil Day and his staff to get us as many records as they could, which you'll see the sort of the results of those things now as they render, as we render our decision, or make a recommendation. So the study area for the Lord &amp; Taylor lots, in particular, the YMCA is not part of it. It's just included there as a landmark, if you will. But you could see here North Avenue, you could see my mouse, hopefully. You could see North Avenue, and you could see like the main Lord &amp; Taylor lot, train tracks right behind it. And really, what this site is, is, it is incredibly unique. It's, I think, it's undebatable that it's a purpose-built downtown department store. I can't really think of another one, and I'm, and I think about this kind of stuff a lot. And I've grown up in New Jersey, and I've lived here my whole life. To think about another property like this, the Epstein's Department Store, as, you know, in my office, as we began to think about examples of this, they all end up being a lot of redevelopment sites, quite frankly. That you have the Epstein's in Marstown, the Haynes Building in North, others that have all sort of found their way into being reused or redeveloped as sites completely. So there's limited pedestrian infrastructure that, these parking lots are not built like modern parking lots with crosswalks and things like that. There really is an abundance of surface parking associated with this department, so it sort of sits in a sea of asphalt, as planners might say. There is a lack of connectivity. We call it the street wall, that pedestrians feel comfortable walking on streets that are protected, that have a streetscape, that have trees and a building sort of next to it with a, with a defined sidewalk area. This is just parking lot. And we're going to get into all that. And the sites are essentially fully covered. You know, we even went behind the store, between the store and the parking and the train tracks. Even that has asphalt on it. I'm like, how did they even get it in there? Because it was so tight. But they, this whole site is literally paved. And then the Rialto's site is just the Rialto Theater. A lot of people might not know that some of the retail, as you walk past, that those retail shops are in the same building. But it is just the theater and just that one property. As you may recall, council members, we just went through a similar presentation for the parking lots behind. So this is not including any of the parking lots, just that one, this one property. And really, like, the sort of highlights, Cliff Notes of this property is the things that we found, you know, considerably relevant. It's a vacant movie theater. This is another purpose-built facility, another vacant movie theater with a few secondary commercial uses. The interior has been essentially gutted, and it shows signs of disrepair associated with vacancy and, you know, just overall age, quite frankly. Really limited infrastructure for entry and egress for vehicular and for pedestrians, and another site that's almost 100% covered with impervious surface, which does become relevant, and we'll explain why. So we include this map. This is a map of the Special Improvement District. And the boundaries are, might be a little hard to see for folks, but like, it kind of comes like this. This is the Lord &amp; Taylor site. So they, these boundaries came in here to get, you know, that nice tax assessment, quite frankly, into the Special Improvement District, the Lord &amp; Taylor site, and then it also, the Rialto is also well in there. And this, again, you'll, you'll see why I bring these things up as I begin to lay the fact pattern down for the things that are relevant to a consideration of whether this is a redevelopment area. So some of the other relevant facts is just the fact that this has been, that, that Westfield loves its downtown and that this is the core and the heart of the community. There are some places like, yeah, this downtown's over there, and like, we live, we live here. Like, people in Westfield, as I observe, they live both in their homes and in the downtown. That's a beautiful, that's a really cool thing about the town. I just want to read this real quick, and I won't read anything else word for word, I promise. But downtown Westfield serves as the heartbeat of the community's commercial and social activities. It continues to be envisioned as a pedestrian-oriented and mixed-use center. It will offer a variety of housing choices, retail environments, and traditional and non-traditional office employment opportunities. New development will preserve and celebrate the town's history and architecture and provide housing and destinations for shopping and services, all within an environment of tree-lined streets, pedestrian parks, and plazas. Like, what's, what's to argue about that? So that's the vision in the 2019 master plan reexamination. And this sort of sets the bar and sets the goal. And we start to ask ourselves, do these properties advance, advance this? Or could they, under different circumstances? And then even in the 2002 master plan, it talks about the Business District and the downtown encouraging mixes of land uses, promoting a desirable visual environment, parking insufficient numbers, better pedestrian environments, and discouraging automobile-only oriented development, like strip malls, and probably like department stores that have, you know, acres and acres of parking around them. So we get into this statutory criteria, and these are the things that the state, state legislature created, the local redevelopment and housing law. And for properties that meet these criteria, the municipality kind of gets additional powers to deal with them, because the state legislature recognizes that some of these sites are really difficult, and in other communities and in history, these things would stagnate. And I almost, I equate it, like a shout out to my father, who taught me everything about cars. I equate it to like rust on a car that rust spreads, and that you have to take care of it quickly, or, or it gets a little out of control. So this is, so these properties and, like, getting these deleterious conditions happening, other properties around them, and that's how you kind of get into that cycle that we've seen in kind of older cities in the state. So the redevelopment law is now being used by a number of suburban communities like Westfield and really and really countless others to be more proactive, to, to not let it get to that point, to not let it get to a truly deleterious condition. But when things are starting to turn or when we have sorts of concerns that, you know, we, we address them and we use the redevelopment powers that allow you to kind of create custom-made zoning for the property that allow you to have certain financial tools available. Um, I will say that this is a non-condemnation redevelopment area. These are private properties and there used to be, it used to always, all redevelopment areas used to be condemnation. Um, and that was always sort of one of the powers. That is no longer the case. And the council made the decision when they initiated this process back, I guess in April, that this would not be a condemnation redevelopment area. So anything that happens here happens with the voluntary consent of the property owners or redevelopers to whom they go under contract with. So, uh, now that I've said that, the, the criteria that the state found, the state legislature found to be critical in, um, allowing municipalities to take these additional powers over and above the regular zoning, um, that we do to do land use controls are things like substandard and unsafe buildings, dilapidated buildings. That's criteria A, criteria B. The abandonment of commercial structures or significant vacancies for a period of two or more years. Um, and I'm only gonna read the ones that we're gonna talk about tonight. Dilapidated obsolescence, faulty arrangement, uh, buildings or improvements that ultimately, because of these kinds of qualities are detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community and also properties that are consistent with smart growth planning principles. So as we get into these properties, the first ones we're gonna talk about are the parking lots for the, uh, the Lord &amp; Taylor site. And obsolescence, and you heard me talk about this a couple of weeks ago with regard to the public parking facilities. Up surface parking lots and situated in the middle of a downtown. The New Jersey courts have held that municipalities are sort of permitted to consider this as, as like per se obsolescence almost. Um, and I'm gonna go through some of the factors that the, uh, New Jersey appellate division has considered and allows municipalities to do this. So there was a case in Princeton, um, was actually argued by, uh, Westfield's current redevelopment counsel, Bob Goldsmith. And we, we read, we studied that case because it is, I, I think, one of the most relevant cases to Westfield at this moment. It was a 2004 case and, um, they challenged the redevelopment there and the court said, no, the, the surface parking lots that the municipality has can be considered obsolete. And that we pulled out three, three factors that they used in determining that. And one was that the properties were located in the, in a downtown environment, right? Two is that there have been long-term efforts underway to advance that, to advance the, the quality of the downtown. And that, that the parking lots, um, could be used, uh, and projected to serve the health, safety and welfare of the community. So are these properties downtown? Yes. We've, we've established that with the map that I showed you. Have there been long-term efforts underway to do downtown revitalization? Absolutely. You had the 2002 master plan, you have the 2019 reexam, you have another plan, uh, master plan that's, uh, being completed right now. A theme in all these plans is support the downtown, grow the downtown, strengthen the downtown. And then so, so how does exactly as a parking lot sort of inhibit or implicate the, the public health or welfare? And, you know, we came up with, with three arguments, particularly for these lots themselves, that surface parking lots are just a really inefficient way to use valuable land, to use land that's about potentially contributing to the downtown, potentially contributing financially, um, to your overall tax base, that these are relatively low, low improvements, uh, low improvement rate to property value ratios. That they don't contribute anything more really, and these are the same arguments that you heard me make with regard to the public parking lots, that they don't contribute more, really anything more than providing parking. And it's a role that they don't even do that good of a job in, in doing because they're really inefficient. They do a really inefficient job compared to, um, structured garages and, and mixed-use facilities. And then there's design argument that it's a design characteristic. It inhibits pedestrianism. It inhibits the aesthetic qualities which have been upheld as a part of the public purposes of land use laws. Um, so, you know, for these types of reasons, we found all of those factors present in these parking lots. So this is a lot, uh, 14, block 2502, lot 14. Um, this is the lot directly across. It's about, uh, 1.1, one, it's about 1.1 acres, um, surface parking lot. This is that criteria D and criteria H, which is smart growth, uh, planning principles. I'm not gonna read through everything here, but with regard to, um, the criteria D that, you know, this is about 504 square feet of, of asphalt for every parking space. A, a parking garage, even a, even a well-designed parking lot would only be about 300 square feet. So the way that this place is designed and the, and the striping, it really only provides 98 spaces for one acre. Uh, the improvement value per acre is $44,000. In other places in Westfield, it's about a million. As we've talked about in the past, it really does punctuate the downtown experience and make it so as a pedestrian, your experience stops sort of at this. Uh, this is, and the intersection right before, as I was sort of corrected by some members of the public during the planning board, that this is, uh, that this is it. And that, um, it's just not in good condition, uh, that it's falling apart, that the striping is not really well-designed. As it stands, it was just sort of like jammed in there. It seems like as other properties maybe were added. Um, and now it's, uh, like a flag lot with, with a few different poles on it. Now we have, uh, block, uh, 2506, lot one. This is the smaller of the lots on the far side of North Avenue. Again, has 88 spaces. This one has 320, uh, square feet per lot, but no pedestrian striping or no pedestrian amenities, excessive lock coverage, another break in the street wall that really kind of creates that barrier between the downtown proper and the residential neighborhoods, um, beyond it. And then this is the main site, the, uh, 5.61 acres. And there's a little bit more to this argument than just the parking lots. Block 2508, lot 11. And so obsolescence, faulty arrangement, excessive coverage in a manner that's helped, uh, down to the health, safety and welfare of the community detrimental. So what is obsolescence? And we had to really kind of dig into this because we knew that a downtown store, and we wrote this before we knew anything about any sort of bankruptcies, uh, that were happening. Um, we were just looking at this store as a standalone department store. And there was, uh, so, so we looked to see like, what, what do the courts have to say about this? What does the, um, the market have to say about obsolescence and functional obsolescence? And really the obsolescence is the process of falling, of falling into disuse as it relates to the usefulness and acceptance of a facility. So it doesn't mean that it had to be vacant. It doesn't mean that it had to be bankrupt or that had to be, um, any of that, that, that we were moving toward a process. Um, and there was, there has been an example and we're not gonna, our intention is not to include every single fact here. But we did do a report. We submitted that report to the planning board. Um, and it is available to the public. And there were, there was a couple of pages in which we sort of talked about dramatic declines in, in sales, dramatic declines of, of employment in this sector, a number of high-profile bankruptcies, now including the proprietors of this retail establishment or the operators of it. And, uh, you know, for those reasons, and we talked about, um, you know, e-commerce and the shopping malls, and all of these things sort of took their chunk away from independent retailers and downtown environments. Um, and now this, this last, uh, pandemic and social distancing has been, you know, the death knell frankly, as much as I hate to admit it, uh, for a lot of them, uh, the, the operators of, of Lord &amp; Taylor included. So, um, and, you know, C P R E's real estate market, um, outlook of this year, and this is maybe even created before all of this sort of happened, is that retail only, si- uh, single-use retail may not be the best use for struggling malls and oversized retail assets that are well-positioned to transform into mixed-use town centers in the heart of communities where people want to live, work and play. So that's what the market is saying. That's what the, the overall acceptance, the public acceptance of a facility is saying. So obsolescent communities, why, like what are the consequences of this obsolescence? How does this begin to implicate the general welfare of the community? That this is, I think, the largest taxpayer in the municipality. If this site goes dark and there are tax appeals, there will be significant consequences from a fiscal and financial standpoint for the town of Westfield. It would also just really inhibit the ability for, for this community to achieve that vision that they articulated in the master plan. They diminish the connect, this, this site, these sites in particular diminish connectivity to the surrounding area. There are buildings and improvements that are detrimental because they create hazardous conditions for pedestrians. And that, um, there's excessive lock coverage, which, um, as we've talked about during planning board hearings, it really creates this, uh, environmental impact of non-point source water pollution and excessive runoff and things of that nature. So I have one more property left and it won't be that one, I promise, and then I'll be done. Uh, so then this is the Rialto Theater. It's just a third of an acre and, uh, block 2508, lot 11. And, um, generally speaking, um, this property, uh, and I had, and I, and I just want to mention that we did have a, a lot of dialogue with members of the planning board about this. And the things that I'm about to say are, are my observations from a redevelopment planning perspective. I am not a structural engineer. I am not here to recommend that these properties, um, that this, that this, eh, eh, far from it, that I recommend that this, that this building be removed. This, this plan is, and this study is agnostic on what happens to this building. What I'm here to say is, um, sort of what are the conditions that I see that are, that create a general obsolescence, a general safety concern, unwholesomeness, uh, and things like that. So I just please understand that when I say these things, I'm not making a recommendation or a conclusion, um, about this building. So some of the things that we saw, uh, were, you know, really, uh, haphazarding wiring and equipment. It seemed like every time a new movie operator came in or a new projector was invented, they just like dragged the, the extension cord over and kind of plugged that one in and, and maybe tied off the old ones. The basement is, um, was, I'm a little scarred, uh, by that one, uh, going down. There's a lot of spider webs. So, but, and there was just standing water, um, in there. So, uh, that is a pretty unhealthy condition. And that we saw, you know, limited means of egress. I don't think if, if theater could be built this way today with regard to ADA accessibility. And that there was just really limited access, uh, throughout, uh, if there was ever, you know, a fire and, and sort of these, these egress conditions. Um, so, and again, this is not a recommendation for demolition by any way, shape or form. And I just, we had a lot of discussion with that planning board and I want to make sure that I put that onto the record. And that this is a building that has been previously used for commercial purposes and that has been allowed to fall into a state of disrepair, that as it stands today is not tenable, in my opinion. That the theater is, um, unsuitable for tenancy as it, as it exists. It is purpose-built as a theater. It couldn't be used for anything else today. A lot of, so this was maybe the only theater in the photograph here that has seats in it. The rest of the theaters, they sold off, um, the seats, um, but it really lacks the necessary infrastructure. There was, um, no seating. There was no projection equipment. Um, everything was sort of taken by the prior operators according to, um, the current property owner who really is incredibly nice people. And, um, there were some ingress egress. We saw what are intrusion issues that would all need to be, uh, some of those other criteria A issues that I just addressed would be, needed to be addressed for tenancy. And then obsolescence, that, you know, this is a theater that they've, they've tried and tried to make it a business, to make the business case for this theater, that they had bigger, bigger, um, rooms, and then they cut them up into smaller rooms to show more shows. And then they were just smaller theaters that people didn't like. People started going to Route 22 to the movies. Um, people started getting the 65-inch screen, 65-inch LED screens in their living rooms. This is the way the world's moving, unfortunately. And now, like in this moment, um, nobody goes to movie theaters. I don't know when we're gonna sit in a dark room with a bunch of strangers again. Um, but that, that is sort of, eh, part of the obsolescence of this building is the fact that it is really designed for this one purpose and it lacks the kinds of amenities that other theaters are doing and other theaters are updating themselves, like, you know, dining in the, dining in theater and bigger seats and things like that to compete with one another. This theater doesn't have the infrastructure to do that. Again, a lot of these criteria A faulty arrangement issues and excessive land coverage, um, that the site is a hundred percent paved. So last point, there's something called criteria, uh, criterion H. This is about smart growth. The entire downtown of, of Westfield, maybe the entire community is, is, I would call a smart growth community. Established downtowns, close to transit, mixed, uh, land uses, walkable communities. And these, all, all these properties meet that. Um, I will just say for the record that we never base our conclusions solely on criteria H. We've never seen litigation about that, but as planners, we always put that as like the cherry on top, um, never the ice cream. So what, uh, what our recommendations are and, and why we think that this council can act in this way lawfully is that the Lord &amp; Taylor sites are all criteria D based on obsolescence and faulty arrangement. They're all criteria H because of smart growth. And then the Rialto site has features of dilapidation. They have features of untenability and, and vacancy, long-term vacancy. There's the fault, the, um, obsolescence arguments under criteria D and then criteria H for smart growth principles. So that's, um, that's sort of that, this, these, all these are the properties that we recommend be designated as redevelopment areas. All the ones in blue, so all the Lord &amp; Taylor properties, the Rialto properties. And sort of what happens from here and what is, and what does this mean if you were to designate these properties and, and adopt this resolution? It could mean, it's sort of what you make of it at this point. So you're sort of agreeing with my conclusions and my recommendations, ours and the planning boards at this point that, um, that these properties meet these criteria. If you decide to do nothing else from here, you're under no obligation to do anything else from here. If, um, but it, it enables you to, um, to do more planning on these properties to, um, you know, potentially work with the private parties that own them or that would be interested, um, in redeveloping them and coming up with a redevelopment plan and, uh, and adopting that. And that becomes sort of an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So thank you for listening. I'm sorry it took so long. I don't even know how long it took, but, um, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments.
Phil, this is, uh, Councilman LaGripo. Uh, when people hear redevelopment, they think pilot programs. Could you, could you explain a little what pilot programs are? Any, the big concern is the impact on the school system and, uh, education?
Sure. So basically, um, the two things that you need to know about to understand what a pilot is, the, the, the fancy Latin term that, that we use to talk about what we all, the way we all pay property taxes is ad valum. Which is that we all sort of pay an equal assessment of our property taxes. It's done through, um, you know, the assessor and, there's a formula and, and it's applied equally to all of us. What the state legislature, um, has realized over the years is that sometimes, um, some properties are really expensive to redevelop. If it's very costly for them to redevelop, I'm gonna put you on the screen so I could actually look at you. And that, uh, there's challenges with, with different properties, um, environmental or, or things of that nature. So what it allows a municipality to do, and this is not required under the law, but I would tell you that there would be no way I would recommend you consider it, is to look at the broader financial picture, um, of a redevelopment project. And if a developer, um, is trying to, um, get this property, um, off, you know, off the ground and to try to redevelop it and, and really make a lot more money for you than what it's currently making typically, like I would never tell you to, to do a pilot unless it's more than what you're currently getting in tax revenue. That you could come up with different formulas. Um, it gives you a couple of other options for the formulas to calculate their tax payment. So it's a payment in lieu of taxes, meaning that it, it can be based on the revenue of the project at a minimum of 10% of the overall gross revenue of the project. It can be a function of the cost of construction, a minimum of 2.5% of the cost of construction. It can end up being exactly the same as what somebody's paying or would be paying in property taxes. Sometimes it just gives you a level of flexibility and it gives the, um, your, your redevelopment partner a level of flexibility. It'll, sometimes municipalities might have big infrastructure projects, like big parking garages that need to get done. And that if there's, there's certain bonds that are allowed, that, that if you're gonna, um, adopt certain bonds that get attached to the project and not the municipality's balance sheet, it's independent of the municipality's balance sheet redevelopment area bonds, you have to have a pilot in order to pay, uh, because the project itself is the one that pays that kind of debt, that kind of.
I think the concern is pilots could have a negative impact on the school system, so.
Can I just, can I just, because I think for the, Mark, what I said upfront is that we're going to try to avoid the questions on the presentations that like.
I'm sorry, Phil, Phil said if you had any questions, I was just asking.
Yeah, no, no, I recognize that. But just on, so the fact, I think what Phil concluded was the fact that, I mean, this just allows us to begin those conversations. So there is no conversation about pilot on these programs at the moment. And I think there's a lot of time on that to be educated. So, and, and so I just said, so we can say that it's premature to have that conversation now. And so for the purpose of expediency, if we could move on to the next presentation, that would be great. And there'll be plenty of time to ask all those questions as the, as these projects materialize. And as Phil said, we could end up deciding that we don't want to do anything and, and just status quo seems to be okay, but that certainly isn't what was communicated to us through the master plan. So, so with that, I think I want to thank Phil and Chris, thank you very much for being here. And we will move on to Maria and Robert from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Robert, do you, or Maria, want to share your screen or?
Yeah, I can share the screen.
Okay.
And I'm just unmuting. Hi, thank you guys for having us. Thanks, Robert, for being once again my IT guy. Hold on, let me put myself.
Is it showing?
It is. Okay. So, so yes, thanks everyone. I'm Maria Boyes, I'm the HPC chair. We were asked to put together a few slides a few weeks ago to present to the planning board to talk about the ordinance and how we came about it. So this is basically that presentation. We've updated it a little bit in the end to talk about the amendments and Robert will take the second half. One of the things that we've been hearing so much since this ordinance came about is that it seemed to just happen overnight. And why did it just suddenly come about within the next, you know, within the last few weeks? And in fact, the ordinance has been worked on for the last year and a half or so with members of the HPC, the town attorney, the town planner, the planning board attorney has weighed in. So it's really something that has been worked on for quite a while. And, and regarding wanting to have a new ordinance, you can go all the way back to the master plan in 2002. The goals and objectives here are about identifying the various historic sites, structures, and districts that exist, establishing appropriate regulations for the preservation of these sites, and establishing regulations that encourage development and redevelopment in historic districts to be compatible with existing historic structures and sites. Next slide, please. So in addition to that, all the way back in 2002, one of the things that the town of Westfield had talked about was, and had as a goal, was to receive a certified local government status. I had heard about that long before I was ever even on the HPC, that the CLG was something that would be good for the town, something that the town has been trying to get for decades now. As a CLG, Westfield would be eligible for various historic preservation fund grants. Next slide. So what is a CLG? It offers municipalities the opportunity to participate in state and federal historic preservation programs. And this participation requires that the municipality have a historic preservation ordinance and a commission that conforms to the specifications of both the MLUL law and the National Park Service approved by the New Jersey Certified Local Government Guidelines. So as a CLG, the community is eligible for these grants for a variety of local preservation activities. Next slide, we'll give you an example of those activities. So the goals of the grants is to identify all building sites and districts which are significant in American historic architecture, archaeology, and engineering, and which meet the criteria for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, as well as to design and implement planning tools for the protection of these resources. And I just bolded the meet the criteria part today because I have to say, one of the things that we've been hearing these past several weeks is, and, and you know, legitimately from concerned citizens, is that, you know, just because my house was built before 1930, you're going to come and designate it the day after this ordinance is passed. And if not you, the town, the next town, whatever. And I have to reiterate that it takes a very strict criteria that is on the National Register of Historic Places website. It's also on our FAQ page within the web, the art, it's HPC governor, government website. And it's not something that is that easily met. So in addition to those funds, some of the other things that those funds are used for are preservation plans, resource surveys, register, national register nominations, preservation projects, historic reports, and CLG training opportunities. Next slide, Robert. So fast forward from 2002 to 2019, we all participated and went through the master plan reexamination last year. Out of their 12 guiding principles, six of them had to do with what this ordinance can help achieve. As we grow, we will strive to preserve the attributes of our unique hometown character and community identity. We will retain the best qualities of a small town and respect its heritage. And we will maintain and enhance the historic and human orientation of our downtown as a center of our community. Next line, slide. The last three of those six are, we realize that architectural and land use design is fundamental to our identity. As Westfield progresses into the future, special attention will be given to promoting high-quality residential and commercial development that reflects aesthetic excellence. And we will preserve our single-family neighborhoods while providing housing choices that will allow people to age in place. Next slide. So in addition to, one of the main things of the master plan reexamination was this survey, and, and not just the survey, you know, I've, I've heard people say, well, who answered the survey? Well, why didn't I hear about the survey? The, in addition to the survey, there were a lot of public meetings. There were, it, there were hundreds of, and thousands of post-its that people would put up in the various meetings that talked about historic preservation. But regarding the survey, 80% of respondents agreed that historic preservation is a worthwhile goal for the town. And again, it was online, it was everywhere. Preservation of historic properties strengthens neighborhoods by raising home values and adding local character charm and a sense of civic pride. Preservation creates positive economic benefits by building on the existing and unique assets of an area, which in turn attracts visitors, new residents, and investments. And historic preservation is an excellent agent for managing growth and change. Again, these bullet points are taken straight from the master plan reexam. We didn't alter them. Next slide. Okay. One of the most concerning trends that came up in the reexam survey is the tear down of older homes, which are then replaced by larger homes on the same size residential lot. In addition to the dislike of these overdeveloped lots, on these, overdeveloped lots, according to the zoning department, 2000 to 2015, in those 15 years, there was a net loss of 643 housing units due to demolition, six in 2000, 85 in 2015. Within the next four years, there were an additional 259 demolitions. And I just want to pause a minute for this photo on the right. If you can go back for a minute, Robert. It was just a screen grab of a typical realtor selling, you know, marketing a typical house in Westfield. The house is going bye-bye. There's a sign, a builder sign that we've, you know, marked out and right next to the for sale sign. Okay, next slide. So recent demolitions, these are just a few that have caught some attention recently since the year 2000, over 900 homes have been razed and replaced by new construction. The house on the left was on Clark Street. It was not listed, but sold directly to a builder for $642,000. And just to clarify, the picture on the left is in the process of demolition. It didn't look like that. It had shingles on it. This is after the shingles were taking off, taken off. So it was prepared for demolition. Many people, as they walked by, thought, oh, great, someone's going to renovate it and just reshingle it. But of course, that wasn't the case. So it was, it, what is now being marketed there is a two side-by-side units with front-facing garages that will sell for 950,000 each. The house on the right, you might recognize, is the Red Cross Building. It's on Elm Street. That was sold also directly to a builder for $638,000. And each side-by-side unit will be 1.2 million. Next slide. So in addition to taking away the historic character of our home, these demolitions are also changing the economic diversity of our town. Many of you may recognize the house, these are two smaller house examples. The one on the left is the Bagger House from 2010. It is my understanding that the builder went to the planning board and asked for a variance so he could make three lots side-by-side, promising to keep the historic house. He put it up on risers and let it rot for years. So that house, of course, ultimately was demolished. The building on the right was a beautiful, smallish, not too small, but stone home in the Witchwood area. And Robert, if you can go to the next slide. It happened to be built by a renowned architect, Ernest Flag. He was known for his Bozart-style architecture. He built the Singer Building and the Scribner Building in Manhattan, as well as the Corcoran Gallery of Art in DC. But he was also known for these English-style stone cottages, like the one featured here that was in Westfield, and was included in the 1922 Book of Small Houses. And that house is now gone as well. And that's all, I think, at this point, I'm going to give it over to Robert and he's going to tell you a little bit more about the ordinance itself.
Well, thank you very much, Maria. I appreciate it. I'd like to start off with this slide, which indicates that the historic preservation ordinance has been around in Westfield since created in 1984, approved by the town council in 1986. And it was meant to protect the town's history. There was widespread agreement in the town council at the time and in subsequent town councils, that historic preservation is important to the fabric of our society here in Westfield. And it is something that I think generally is well-respected when it comes down to the objective of historic preservation. The actual exhibiting of how we go about preserving things seems to be the issue. The existing ordinance is in, is in direct conflict with the municipal land use law as it includes a voting procedure for the creation of a historic district. And that was one thing that the state historic preservation office indicated to us in the process of rewriting our ordinance. They said you cannot have zoning, and this is a zoning regulation, you cannot have zoning by referendum, which is essentially what our current ordinance has. So it was inconsistent with the municipal land use law, which was revised sometime in the early 2000s. And, and so part of our process was to update our existing ordinance with the, the language in the municipal land use law as directed by the state historic preservation office. There are people that are questioning why this is necessary. It's necessary because we do have a historic preservation ordinance in place now. And as part and parcel of the municipal land use law, you can't have language in zoning regulations that is not consistent with the municipal land use law. So that's the reason why we've had to reorient the wording. And that reoriented wording is something that we'll talk about in a little bit. But the existing ordinance includes, you know, inadequate wording with regard to the kinds of changes that would trigger a minor versus a major submission for a certificate of appropriateness as well. So that was another issue that we had to, to address as part of our rewrite. The enabling legislation of the municipal land use law, it reoriented the way that historic preservation is done. And this is not only in New Jersey, but is done in other states around us and as far, as far west as Michigan, in fact. The, the way that the federal government reapproached historic preservation was to tell the states, essentially, or guide the states in, through the park service and through the park service regulations, the Secretary of the Interior guidelines indicated that because this is a zoning ordinance, it has to be, the authority is essentially granted to the town council of the governing body. And so it is only the governing body that has the ability to make a historic designation. The, the ordinance is, as I said before, an extension of the municipality zoning laws and it does fall under the power of policing as granted by the state. One of the benefits, if you want to call it that, is, is actually lowers the threshold from the existing ordinance for petitions and protest. Our current ordinance has a 25% threshold. This new orientation, it was decided in municipal land use law that it would be lowered to 20%. So it allows people who want to object to it, have the ability to object to it, and it lowers that percentage for petitions and protest. It also institutes a requirement for a super majority in the event that the town council decides that there's still feel necessary to designate a historic site or district. And if there is a petition of protest that is levied, the, the super majority vote of two-thirds of the town council must take place to override that written petition of protest. And the Historic Preservation Commission, there's, there's a lot of misinformation with regard to what the role of the commission is. We are advisory only. We work with, with the town council and the planning board to advise them and to sensitize them essentially as to the nature of properties and the historic nature and architectural significance of properties throughout town. One of the ways that we do that is we build the historic plan element, which we are required to update on a periodic basis, which we are in the process of doing, you know, this year. And so that process is revised periodically to make sure that certain, certain properties would be pulled off if in fact they no longer are eligible for this historic plan element. This is a listing of properties. It does not mean that they're going to be designated. It means that it is a subset of the properties that we may have interest in from a historic perspective. It does, as I said before, it does not necessarily mean that they will be designated. In fact, majority of them probably won't be designated. The proposed revision is based on feedback from designated homeowners. We, we've had lots of discussions with the historic district that we have and with other groups of people throughout town. And one of the biggest issues was that nobody wanted anybody to tell them what color to paint the outside of their house. And so we agreed with that. We, we feel that it's not worth the antagonistic relationship, frankly, that this, that this was causing in the past. So we decided to remove it entirely from the revised ordinance. And in addition to that, we wanted to make the process easier. So we removed the fees associated with submitting an application of a certificate of appropriateness. So that saves some money as well. And based on the feedback, it adds an informal review process to expedite understanding of the proposed plan. So if somebody is, is interested and they are designated, they want to have a change to their property, instead of going through the whole certificate of appropriateness process, we do have an informal review process that they can invite us out, explain what they're going to, what they're talking about doing with the property. And then we have that, that interest and we can have a dialogue and then it will go back to the Historic Preservation Commission for review in a streamlined manner. It also allows us, this revised ordinance, the ability to waive items for non-relevancy. One of the things that we heard loud and clear was that the process was laborious, that we were asking for lots of information that in fact maybe wasn't necessary to be asked for. So we have the ability under this revised ordinance to streamline the process and only ask for the information that's relevant to the particular certificate of appropriateness So as I said before, this is an advisory board. The Historic Preservation Commission currently, in the existing ordinance, is only an advisory board and will continue to be only an advisory board. The only, the only, only the governing body of Westfield can make the decisions, the town council can make a decision to, to designate. And the, the criteria utilized by the Historic Preservation Commission is, as Maria indicated, is part of the National Register of Historic Places criteria eligibility and also in conjunction with the park service. The, the new preservation ordinance includes a demolition provision review process. This is done by the Historic Preservation Officer that will go out before any services are disconnected at the particular home or building. at the particular home or building. They will review the property for any historical architectural significance and then go back to the Historic Preservation Commission, make a recommendation to the commission whether it should be designated based on the criteria that is included in the ordinance. We don't feel that this is going to be a situation, which has been unfortunately misrepresented. We're not going to be designating lots and lots of properties. That's not what we're talking about. That's not the interest of the Historic Preservation Commission, frankly. And many of them won't even be eligible based on the criteria as set forth in our ordinance. The attempt, what we're trying to do is to slow down the demolition of our historical assets in Westfield and to make sure that if there are historical homes or they're architecturally significant homes or districts that have a significant streetscape that cannot be, that we should not be destroying, those are things that we want to be able to make sure are reviewed and open to the public for comments. And through this review process and through the HPC and eventually the Planning Board and the Town Council's input, we're hoping that this ordinance will help us achieve that. So the process does include improved communication between all of the three boards, the HPC, the Planning Board, and the Board of Adjustments, which is one of the things that we heard was a bit of a stumbling block. We want to make sure that there's concise communication across the board. The, excuse me. The, it does facilitate a much more in-depth understanding of the historical significance before demolition permit is issued. And that is extremely important. We want to make sure that we understand what is being destroyed, when it's being destroyed, and whether this is something that is irreplaceable in the fabric of our community. So the rehabilitation offers higher investment with regard to our return on investment with regard to economic benefit. There are many, many studies that are available that show that for every billion dollars spent on rehabilitation, there are significantly more jobs created, and in fact, more jobs created than with new construction. And there are other economic benefits. Millennials are looking for historic towns just like Westfield. They've moved many times in their life, and they're looking for smaller homes that they can restore. And this is one of the things that's come out in several studies that are done by the Millennial Research Report for the National Trust of Historic Preservation and other studies that have been done by the National Trust. So in the process of going to different parts of the community and speaking with different constituents, one of the things that we have tried to do is to understand what people's fears are with regard to this preservation ordinance revision and to try to address some of those fears in these amendments that we're proposing to the Town Council. So the special demolition review requirements for non-designated pre-1930s homes should apply to the removal, destruction, and demolition of more than 75% of the applicable structure of the building and no more than 25% of the facade. The attempt here is a recognition that people want to add on to their homes. These are pre, these are non-designated homes, pre-1930s, non-designated homes. And people felt that they want to be able to build on to their house. They want to be able to add additions. And so in this change, we've amended our ordinance and provided this amendment to help clarify that they would be able to make those changes to their structures. The general demolition ordinance also needed to be amended to make clear that the special historic review process for demolitions is a zoning review and that proceeds any other general demolition requirements, such as disconnecting electricity and plumbing and addressing asbestos and so forth. The proposed HPC ordinance should be amended for minted property owners to request informal HPC review of pre-1930 structures in connection with the special historic review process for demolitions. That is to facilitate an understanding of why the owner is interested in demolishing the home. Maybe we can open up a dialogue in the event that it does have historic significance or architectural significance or cultural significance and to address that before the home is demolished. And the HPC ordinance should be amended to shorten the timeframe for that special historic review of demolition. And that is the timeframe, it's where slashed essentially in half. And it does put more pressure on the HPC, but we agree that we want to be able to give a quick response with regard to the demolition ordinance. So the proposed HPC ordinance should be amended to clarify that even in pre-1930 home meets the historic designation criteria the HPC may recommend, but it's not required to recommend that the home be designated historic. And the reason why this is in here is because in the process of doing the review, we may end up finding that there could be a hardship that needs to be addressed. And so, in fact, it allows for the recognition of that hardship and to actually not be forced into designating that particular building because of hardship case. The proposed HPC ordinance needs to be amended to make it more specific that minor work being undertaken by property owners and historically designated properties need not go through a certificate of, a formal certificate of review process. And this was something that we heard from the Historic Preservation District in Kimball. They, if there's minor work being done, they wanted to, the capability to facilitate repairs with like or exact materials. And so we've amended this ordinance to allow that to happen in a much more readily, facilitate that repair in a much more readily, ready fashion. Excuse me. The proposed HPC ordinance should be amended to include at least one member of the HPC should, they should own a property in a designated historic district or historic landmark. Actually, we already have one, who, there is somebody who does have a home in a historic district. That's the chairman, Maria Boyes, who has a home in Ocean Grove, which is a historic district. In addition to that, there are other members of the commission that are pursuing designation. So this is something that we agree with. We want to make sure that we have people on the HPC commission that understand it from the inside out. So we agree completely with this, and that's why we're putting, excuse me, putting through this amendment. And the mayor and Town Council should move forward with the area of rehabilitation designation in order to incentivize historic preservation and benefit property owners who have already historically designated. We understand people's commentary with regard to, what is the financial benefit for me to pursue designation? Well, we've been grappling with this for quite some time. This area in need of rehabilitation designation, it looks to be something that is very favorable. It will allow a roll-in of the tax liability for changes to the property, to the historic property, the designated historic property over a period of five years. So it could very much save quite, excuse me, my allergies are bothering me today, save some tax liability for the historic homeowner. So that is our presentation. Mayor, if you'd like to take over?
Thank you. Hold questions until we get to the discussion on the ordinance. So we have a lot to get to. So thank you, Maria, and thank you, Robert. And we actually have several advertised hearings tonight. So with that, Tara, I'm going to hand it off to you.
There are several advertised hearings. The first is for General Ordinance Number 2177, an ordinance amending the land use ordinance to establish and regulate boarding houses. Anyone who should be heard on General Ordinance Number 2177, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
We have two people have raised their hand. Let me see if they're in reference to this particular ordinance. Versus Mr. Blake. Blake, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I did not want to speak on that ordinance.
Okay, so we'll wait for your comments to the open public portion. Mr. Amerish, better? Marish?
Yeah, no, I did not want to speak about this ordinance.
Okay, no problem. No one else is waiting, Mayor, for this ordinance so you can close the public hearing.
This hearing is closed. And I would just ask if anyone that wants to, if anybody doesn't want to speak on any of these ordinance, please just don't raise your hand virtually and say, raise your hand when that time, whenever it is you want to come up and speak so that we don't always have to go to you would be very appreciative. Thank you. So this hearing is closed.
Next is General Ordinance Number 2178, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey relating to solar energy systems. Anyone who should be heard on General Ordinance Number 2178, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
We have one person here, Mr. Korfmacher. Korfmacher, are you there? Hello?
Hello?
Yes?
Yeah, my name is, we're talking about the solar ordinance, correct?
Yes, we are.
All right, just, I don't want to start if I'm in the wrong spot. My name is Dr. Walter Korfmacher. I live on 252 Hazel Avenue in Westfield. I'm a long-term resident of this town. And I just want to add my voice to support the new revised solar panel ordinance that allows street-facing solar panels without a variance as long as they meet certain aesthetic criteria. While I had asked for a total repeal of the current ordinance, I believe the updated version that will be voted on, I believe, tonight, will be acceptable to most people and should allow those people who want to add solar panels to their own roof, to their own house roof to do so regardless of whether the roof is street-facing or not. In addition, as a scientist, I just want to add that I believe the issue of climate change is one we should focus on now as we only have a short time to do what we can to prevent the worst potential effects of climate change. And one small step Westfield residents can do is to place solar panels on their own house roof. This revised ordinance will allow that for many residents that would otherwise not have been able to do so. And my hope is that residents will now consider adding solar panels to their homes and that the town will look for ways to add more solar panels to municipal properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, nobody else? Mayor?
So this hearing is closed.
The third is General Ordinance Number 2180, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to wall-mounted signs for corner lots. Anyone who wish to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2180, please virtually raise your hand and to make a comment, be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Seeing nobody, Mayor?
This hearing is closed.
Next is General Ordinance Number 2181, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to the definition of accessory building or structure. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2181, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment and include your name and address for the record.
Again, seeing none, Mayor?
This hearing is closed.
General Ordinance Number 2182, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to dimensions of garage parking spaces. Anyone who wish to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2182, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment and include your name and address for the record.
Seeing none, Mayor?
This, this hearing is closed.
General Ordinance Number 2183, an ordinance establishing Historic Preservation Commission and providing for the designation and preservation of historic districts and historic landmarks in the town of Westfield. As was mentioned earlier, this ordinance is being amended, so the public hearing for General Ordinance Number 2183 will not be held. Next is General Ordinance Number 2184, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, for mid-block crosswalks. Anyone who wish to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2184, please virtually raise your hand, make your comment, and be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Seeing none?
This hearing is closed.
And the last is General Ordinance Number 2185, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, Fourth Avenue Parking Restrictions. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2185, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Again, seeing none?
This hearing is closed. That was okay. Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of these code review and town property committee ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2177 on second reading, an ordinance amending the land use ordinance to establish and regulate boarding houses.
May I have a second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hadgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2178 on second reading, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey relating to solar energy systems.
May I have a second?
Contract, second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hadgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
Next, I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2180 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to wall-mounted signs for corner lots.
May I have a second?
Second.
Dardia.
Who was that, Dardia? Sorry. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hadgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2181 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to the definition of accessory building or structure.
May I have a second?
Second, Cat?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hadgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
Lastly, I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2182 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield in regard to dimensions of garage parking spaces.
May I have a second?
Second, Contract?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hadgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. Councilman Dardia, please move for the adoption of Public Safety, Transportation, and Parking Committee ordinances.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to move on the adoption of general ordinance number 2184 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, mid-block crosswalks.
May I have a second?
Second, Hapgood?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to also move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2185 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, Fourth Avenue Parking Restrictions.
May I have a second? Second by Farmley, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Farmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the town council regular meeting of July 14, 2020?
So moved.
A move by Councilwoman Mackey, second?
Second.
Second by Dardia, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Do we have any petitions or communications?
No, mayor, we don't.
Great, okay, now it's time for open discussion by citizens. You can virtually raise your hand and make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction and be sure to state your name and address for the record. I only want to make the comment, there's a lot of people here tonight, and if you could, out of courtesy to make sure everybody can be heard and we're not here too late, if you could try and limit your comments to three minutes. And I'm going to reserve, ask the council and myself to reserve comment on your comments until after everybody has had a chance to speak.
I just want to say people do have 10 minutes to speak if they choose to.
They do. I just want to make sure everybody gets heard, but you can get up to 10 minutes if you feel necessary.
Okay, we have our first person, Mr. Andrew Stillson. Andrew, are you there? Name and address, and Andrew? Andrew?
He's muted.
Yep, he muted, Andrew.
Jim, can you unmute him?
Yes. He's unmuted.
There you go. Andrew?
Hello?
Yes, name and address? Go ahead, Andrew. All right, we're going to come back to you, Andrew, okay? Next person, we have Ms. Jacqueline Brevard. Jacqueline, are you there?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, name and address?
Jacqueline Brevard, 266 West Dudley Avenue.
Great, good.
Good, I will be brief. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance for historic designation. And I want the council to know, and anyone who's listening, who has concerns about the ordinance, that I am very proud to state that I am designating my home historically. And I am one of five people in my block who have already signed our consent forms. And those consent forms were signed before COVID kept us at home. Otherwise, they probably would have been acted on by now. And we're also hoping that the remaining seven homes on our block join us and create the West Dudley Historic District. So I'm very proud to say that. I can't wait for it to happen. And I, it breaks my heart to walk around town and see buildings that I used to know gone, disappeared, and replaced with something not nearly as, with any character as it should have. So I've been here for 35, 36 years, and I know these buildings very well, and it, I'm stunned when I don't see them anymore. So as I said, I'm very proud to support the new ordinance for historic designation. I will also, in the interest of full disclosure, I am a member of the HPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you for, and for your designation. It's, that's, it's, it's amazing. Just amazing.
Okay, I, Andrew again? Andrew, are you then there? Andrew? Go ahead, Andrew. Still there, Andrew? Andrew?
He shows us unmuted.
You're, you're, we can hear you. You're unmuted, Andrew, go ahead. Okay, we have nobody else raising their hand? Okay, hold on.
Jim, can Andrew call in?
Yeah, well, we'll get back to Andrew.
He might have a microphone problem, so he might.
Yeah. And check your microphone, we'll, we'll call on you again. Next person, allowed to talk, first name Sherry. Sherry, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Sherry Hines. I live at 28 Stonely Park in Westfield, of course. And I, a thought occurred to me today that one of the problems with this ordinance is that people, we, I've heard a lot of talk from the HPC about seniors being taken advantage of by realtors. But my point about the seniors is that there are many seniors who take reverse mortgages on their homes. And I suspect that the banks will not be looking kindly on giving a reverse mortgage to homes that are pre-1930. If the opportunity for them to sell them at the highest price, whether that, if that happened to be a builder, that they're not going to, they're not going to do that, and therefore the senior is not going to be able to get that reverse mortgage. I suspect that the, that the banks are going to know that we have that ordinance, and that will be one thing they're going to take into consideration when they do that. I also find it very interesting that we're concerned about the historic homes, but yet now we're talking about making parking lots obsolete. And I know that Lord &amp; Taylor and the Rialto aren't the only things being designated obsolete, but that the parking lots in town have been made obsolete. And that plans to build apartments, I, I heard the speaker earlier tonight say homes, which would be urban apartments being built on a lot of these parking lots and retail, more retail space. And you know, when you have renters, temporary residents, people who don't pay taxes, don't have a vested interest in the town and what happens in the town. I just want to make that note, because I think that's very important to think about, that we're going to now be building apartments so that we can have a more urbanized city while we tell people who live in the homes that they should have, keep their homes historic. And some of the buildings that are being built around here don't look very historic. I doubt that these apartments will be built that way either. And we're going to have double-decker parking lots in different areas in the town. And the town voted not too long ago that we didn't want double-deckers. But now I guess the town isn't, the people of the town, the citizens of the town, aren't going to have that vote anymore, because now things have been declared obsolete, and we won't really have a say in them. So that's, I had one more thing about millennials. You know, there was a study done just yesterday that millennials are falling further and further behind because of COVID, and their money, they're not going to be making the same as generations before them. So it's very costly to renovate historic homes. It costs a lot of money architecturally and otherwise. Wiring has to be replaced, plumbing has to be replaced, windows have to be replaced, and if it's declared historic, then the type of windows that go in have to be looked at. It's very expensive to do that. So that's just another note in the, of fact about millennials. And I love to see people that are on the town council that live in, in early, pre-1930 homes, I'd love to see them designate their homes as their way of showing that they care about historic homes. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next person we have is Michael Blancato. Michael, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Go ahead, name, name and address?
Michael Blancato, 18 Carroll Road, Westfield, New Jersey. First, the person who spoke about this, designated her house historic, I commend you for that. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing, and I think you have the choice to do that. I think that is just truly fantastic. And I also think that there should be real estate tax breaks for people who do that kind of thing. Couple of things, in, in the beginning, mayor, you said that there was a lot of misinformation. I think there was a lot of misinformation going around about a lot of things. I think one of the things was, in the last meeting, it was said that this was required by the municipal land use law. And what, the ordinance that we currently have on the table before the amendments is a complete rewrite of the municipal, of the current historic ordinance. And I have some documentation from the state I have just obtained yesterday, and I haven't got a chance to look through it all, that we could have tweaked our current historical preservation ordinance and not had the breadth and depth that we do with this current, this new historical preservation ordinance. And so my comment is, without the amendments and going forward, I don't have all the facts, but there is a couple of things. One, the presentation tonight by Maria was fantastic. Excellent presentation, thank you. The fact that I got to speak with David, Dawn, and Michael, great conversations, and Tom, and Mark, great conversations. I really do think that those things enlightened me to a lot about what this historic ordinance is. But as you know, today, the Big Ten canceled its football games for the coming season. I really think this requires like a town hall setting where we can meet in person. This isn't, doesn't have to be done today. There's no case law out in New Jersey that says, hey, because you're not following municipal land use law, you're going to get fined. What we're going to maybe miss is next January, the $90,000 grant. That's what the most, that's what the biggest penalty would be. The other thing that might happen is a couple of more houses might be demolished over the next few, few months that maybe shouldn't have been. But the planning board, even in that case, has the ability to say to a homeowner, why don't you take this up with the HPC? Let's look at what the alternatives are. And what this work does is it only does that for houses built pre-1930. And some of the pictures that Maria had, I believe, had houses that were post-1930. I even like to go a step further. I would love to see the interior of some of those houses that were demolished, because I have a house that was built prior to 1930. I don't know if it has historical information or not. Have no idea. But if all of a sudden my hands get handcuffed, because as I go to demolish it, I'm, I am planning on doing that within the next five years. To be honest, it's a house on Summit Avenue in Westfield, and all of a sudden my hands are tied. It would be a shame that for so many years I put up and made minor repairs. It's got an inefficient home. You just talked about solar panels and all those things. I really wish that we would take the time to look at the new amendments. And one of the things I would like is, one of the points in there is the commission shall schedule a public hearing on the proposed designation of a landmark at least 20 days prior to the commission hearing. That's only 20 days. A summertime 20-day period is not enough. That period of time should at least be 60 days. And if you want, I can tell you the exact section of the ordinance, but I hope that's amended as well. So I don't have all the facts, I'm not going to go any further, but I would really like this to be more of a town hall conversation before a final vote. I do agree that you were voted in because of change, mayor, and you've said that constantly. But positive change is good. I'm worried that this ordinance, the way it was written, and I think there's going to be a lot of good changes, the way it was written is not positive change, but negative change. Even to the houses that we, that were discussed in the presentation, that's a reduction of around $40,000 a year, just in those two houses, based on quick calculations I was doing, in real estate taxes. So just remember, there's a trade-off. When you, when you demolish a $600,000 home, you get $2 million worth of home later, you get a $1.4 million increase, or roughly around $17,000, $18,000 a year increase. That's how much of a real estate tax increase is. You can check my numbers. I actually asked today the tax department in town to tell me how many homes were demolished in the last few years and what the actual tax increase was. We don't have that data. I think that's necessary data to have here. Because I do agree that there's a lot of properties that should be kept up. And I do agree that the person or people that own those homes should have the right to designate them as historic. What I'm really concerned about, and I know it takes a lot to do this, is that a home like mine, that I have no idea could be historic, or if it is historic, or if an area could be historic or is historic. And that's what worries me about this current rewrite, not amendment to the old municipal land use law. And I do really want to thank everybody who's talked to me, because it's been great conversations. I don't think they've been contentious. I really think they've been fantastic conversations. Thank you, Tom, David, Dawn, and Michael, and Mark, and Maria. Maria and I had a long conversation today. It was fantastic. She's wonderful to speak to. So thanks again, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we have, uh, let's, Mr., Mr. Blake? Mr. Blake, are you there? Mr. Blake?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, name and address?
John Blake, 809 Carlton Road, Westfield. This concerns the cleaning up after the last storm. To my understanding, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration has predicted it's going to be 13 to 19 named storms this year. Of these, six to 10 will be hurricanes, and three to six major hurricanes with top winds of 111 miles per hour. This prediction was made a while ago. I'm surprised that the, the town finds itself caught unaware of the existence of these predictions or unable to cope with what is considered to be the reasonable and normal natural weather storms that are going to hit us in the Northeast. The idea that money hasn't been already appropriated and overtime already appropriated in the budgets of the, both the police, fire, and the public works is amazing. The town is able to have overtime on matters that are what I would consider elective as opposed to mandated. There's absolutely no doubt that it is required for every town to keep clean right of way. The town's streets and sidewalks must be maintained and cleaned if for no other reason to allow emergency vehicles to get around, not to mention the residents. During large storms, no matter how much we might be able to take care of our own trees, the debris from other neighbors down the street, a block away, can come in. And they land on the street in front of you. Is it my tree? I have no idea, and I don't care. The idea in the past has always been, the town is removing it. And despite Ms. Brindle's comments, after 50 years of being here, it's my memory that the town basically took away all the debris. Now, this storm didn't even qualify as a hurricane. And we obviously had a large amount of debris, not to the extent of our neighbors, neighboring towns, who have no problem having a staff that is capable of taking care of these things. Now, I have no problem with various elective uses of Now, I have no problem with various elective uses of overtime. I don't judge whether or not it's proper or improper. But elective uses of overtime gets trumped by me in the estimation of what is necessary and the duty of the town. When we had Adam's Fest, how much overtime was racked up by the police, the fire, and public works? And each of the various departments told to suck it up and to accept their overtime budgets being a bit heavy. The same holds truths for the Black Lives Matters demonstrations. Whether or not one agrees with the cause, it is elective to have the overtime and comp time that was needed on that. Same with 4:00 AM, painting the rainbow crosswalks. As good as a cause might be, there were police and public works people assigned at 4 o'clock in the morning to facilitate this matter. That was an elective use of overtime. I do not see why it is now considered to be elective for the town to come around and clean up, whether or not the debris is the town's or just part of the debris on the town's streets. Now, as far as the landscapers dumping, that's enforcement. If you catch them doing it, if you license these people, you can yank their license. If you don't license them, then figure out some other way to stop them from doing it. But you can't tell people that debris that is piled up in front of their house in the street has to be taken by them in their passenger cars. We don't all own trucks. We don't have saws and power tools necessary to cut these things up. And as far as it's very nice of Mr. Contract to suggest that he can help people who seek help, the people in town shouldn't have to say, please, help me out. We are paying taxes sufficiently to do that. And when you have no problem paying money for elective use of overtime, I think you ought to pay more attention to what is being warned by these meteorologists that New Jersey and Westfield are going to see more storms, bigger storms, and we're going to have more damage. So it's not like it's a surprise. It has been forecast. So get rid of some of the elective uses of overtime and pay for the mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Andrew, I think I saw you. Andrew, is still there? Are you there? You're unmuted. You ready to talk? Go ahead, Andrew. All right, we'll come back to you again, Andrew. Next person, we have Greg Casco. Greg, are you there? Name and address.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Greg Casco, 430/Everest Place. I wanted to address some comments that were made last town council meeting in July by former Councilman Frank Arena when he had requested that either a blue line or possibly a flag be flown at the municipal building to honor the police. In all that they've done recently, during the pandemic, and also in light of the way police officers are being treated throughout our country, he had made some comments towards the end, asking if the mayor would pledge not to defund the police department. And I was a bit surprised by this, because as an attendee of meetings going back to 2010, Councilman Arena stood side by side with Mayor Stibitsky when they cut the police department by 20%. He had no problem cutting staffing levels down to a level that caused an increase in overtime. And obviously, there were some budget cuts that were involved. But I found it hypocritical that he would take this stance at last month's meeting. And I can't help but also remember what he had called this time of year several years ago. He called it silly season, meaning it's election time. And I saw his question to our mayor as somewhat partisan and silly. Because how can you go from wanting to defend, I'm sorry, to defund or reduce manpower in public safety eight to 10 years ago to wanting to give more? In fact, at the end of his statement, he said, I think we should give the police department more money. So I found that a bit hypocritical. Changing gears, I want to thank one of the council members. I received a phone call today from a member of a local church board. About a week ago, I had spoken to a friend who recommended that I call Councilman Dawn Mackey. I had a question regarding a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week refrigerated food pantry. My travels for work have me in Jersey City, and there's a food pantry on a dead-end street that is being utilized every day, every night. I actually drop food off each day. And it's for local residents to come and go. They can take food. They can donate food. It was profiled on NJ.com, the Star Ledger, and I thought about what could I possibly do here in Westfield. I know that my neighbors probably wouldn't allow me or wouldn't want me to put a refrigerated food pantry at the base of my driveway. So I reached out to Councilwoman Mackey, and I want to thank her. Because the people she put me in touch with called today, they're meeting tonight, actually, to discuss this, because they had the same idea. And this is not to take the place of any food pantry run by another church in Westfield. It's to supplement it. You know, what's not seen by the public is all the work that Councilwoman Mackey does behind the scenes. And I can attest to her tenacity and desire to get things done where others might drag their feet. And her work doesn't go unnoticed. Greatly appreciated. She may not hear that enough, but I publicly want to thank her, because her phone call back to me within 24 hours put me in touch with the right people. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, this effort's going to come to fruition. Once again, thank you all for the work that you do, and I appreciate the time I was given here tonight. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Next person we have is Mary Ann Healy Rodriguez. Mary Ann, are you there?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me, please?
Yes, name and address, please.
My name is Mary Ann Healy Rodriguez. I reside at 628 Embry Crescent in Westfield with my husband, Louis. I would like to disclose at the start that I too am a new member of the HPC. And I want to echo the comments of my colleague, co-member Jackie, in regards to homeownership and the privilege it is to be able to restore a home. I joined the committee because I believe that while the people are the heart of a town, I believe the home's actually a reflection of the people that are there. And one of the reasons why we've come to Westfield is to be able to be a part of that. And so I just want to share my support. I too intend to pursue designation of my residence. We're the fourth owners of a home pre 1930 Tudor in Westfield, and we feel it's almost not only a privilege, but it's our responsibility to try to restore and maintain the home in the character with which it was put forth in this town. And I just want to say that I support it, and I want to thank Maria and Robert for their presentations. And I hope to be a part of helping other people to consider the same restoration efforts or care to their homes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay, next person, Robin Ruckowski. Robin, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
Robin Ruckowski, 107 Hazel Avenue.
Go ahead.
In reference to the historical preservation ordinance. So thank you. I've been on most of these meetings in regard to this ordinance, as you know. So I appreciate the consideration of all the comments that the public has made in introducing some amendments and, you know, pushing this off at least a month. So I commend you for doing that and listening to people. So thank you. One of my main concerns has been putting a property on the market, right? That is very most likely not going to be designated as historic, right? So that's been my kind of main concern here, because I own a very large corner property and a small old home. And one day, most likely, a builder's going to want to buy this property, right? It's probably likely what's going to happen here. Not anytime soon. I'm not leaving. I take good care of this house. I love my house. But that's probably where this is going one day, right? So my concern is, you know, that contractors are just not even going to want to be making offers on these homes now at all, or they're going to put some contingencies in because of these hurdles that they would have to face and not knowing what would happen once they submit the permit, right? So you're not even going to get to that point. So I'm concerned about, you know, issues, you know, not just me, but anybody in this situation, you know, getting hung up in attorney review, having some problems, you know, not getting the highest market value for your property. So in reference to this, number three, the proposed HPC ordinance should be amended to permit a property owner to request informal HPC review of pre 1930 structures, which is great. So I like seeing that. But I'm a little hung up now on in connection with the special historic review process for demolitions. Will that be expanded upon? Like, what does that include now, right? Is that just before you're going to submit a permit? Or is this like, you're going to put your house on the market, and that is in connection with the special historic review process? Because, you know, whereas you have to have an offer from a contractor with a contingency in there and then get this request? So I'm just kind of curious what kind of flexibility there's going to be with that. You know, you just want to know, right, before you even start putting your house on the market. You're not, you know, I'm not going to knock down my own house. You know, that's not what I'm planning on doing. I know somebody else mentioned that. So I'm just curious, and I don't know how to get that answer, and if I email you. And I know I didn't really see this in FAQs yet, specifically this question that I keep asking, but I'm glad it's addressed in these amendments. So I'm just curious, will this be spelled out more? When you actually update the ordinance and add the amendments, like, how would you be able to interpret that specific, you know, in connection with special historic review process for demolition? So I, you know, I'll try to send an email as well to follow up. But that would just be my concern, that people understand when you can request this informal review, which I think is a very, I'm very glad to see that in there. So thank you. But I would want to kind of understand when you would be able to request that. Does it have to be, I'm thinking about doing demolition, or, you know, when can that occur? So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else want to be heard?
I'm a little concerned about Mr. Stilson.
Yeah, I was looking for him, actually. He doesn't seem to be online again. While we're waiting for him, we have a person, Kay Mersky. Kay, are you there? Hello?
Yes, okay, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ken Mersky, 625 Lennox Avenue. And about the requirement to have people live in a designated house, I think that is a good intent. But when you put things like that into the requirements, then what happens if someone who's on the HPC living in a house moves away? Is the HPC no longer valid? Do you make that a requirement for people applying for a position? I just think it's too restrictive and can get the HPC and others tied up in knots trying to fulfill all these requirements. Excuse me. So I just think it's better to have a little bit broader wording in regulations like that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Mersky. Again, Mr. Stilson, if you're still out there, if you are unable to get on, feel free to email your council members, the council, the mayor, and we can get back to you in case you're unable to. Meantime, we have another speaker, Liz Lowland. Liz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, address, please.
Liz Lowland, 318 South Euclid Avenue. I'd like to commend all the people who have offered to put forth their homes. I think that's wonderful. And I see that with so many doing it, that I would like to request another amendment be made to this ordinance that the designation by the town be taken out and that it becomes the homeowner's decision to put their house in the historic preservation of the town. I don't think that the town should be telling a homeowner that they have to designate their home, any which way you look at it. It's taking away the rights of someone who owns a home, pays taxes in this town. And it's your God-given right in this state, in this country. You own a piece of property. You own it. This isn't, this town is not an HOA. You know, we don't live in a homeowners association. This is a town where we buy our home, and we buy the land, and it's ours. And I still think it's wrong, and that's part of it, should come out of the ordinance. I also agree with the first speaker or several, that this should be extended so that we can meet in person. I mentioned that in my letter to the editor. I think that doing it this way on such an important issue, and we've seen it with letters and objections and people on the screen here, as much as people can be, it's wrong. This is something that should be done in person. And shame on all of you for doing it this way and doing it in the summer, when so many people are on vacation. And I'm appalled at it, to be honest with you. And I have lived here all my life, and I've never seen anything done so underhandedly. And I, it makes me ashamed almost to live in this town, under this council who runs our town now. You've all just gone off in a direction that is so, I don't even know how to phrase it, that you're just taking a control of people's homes. And it's wrong. It's just wrong. You wouldn't want someone coming into your home and taking something from you. And I beg you not to do that to other people in this town. Stand up for your own rights, and that's what we have to do. And that should be part of the amended amendment in this ordinance, that it should be a self-designation on the part of a homeowner. That should not come out. It should not be your right to tell me or anyone else as a homeowner that they are designated. Not your right. Not your right at all. I bought the home. They bought the home. It's our right to do what we want to do. Yes, you can have the Historic Preservation Commission and come in and request things. And most people who buy a home like this definitely want to keep them up. There's no doubt about it. We have. But the thought that someone could come in and tell me that I'm suddenly on this list and I'm going to be... someone could come in and tell me that I'm suddenly on this list and I'm going to be designated or could be designated, it's horrible. It's horrible. Those, that's not what I want. I was requested, we were asked years ago, and we declined because we did not want to have restrictions on our home. So, as again, I said earlier, I'm appalled at all of you for even considering taking away people's rights in this regard. So I beg you to please amend this ordinance to take that out and make it as something that the homeowner wants to give. And it seems like you're, the Historic Preservation Commission has really come to light through all of this. And maybe you will get many, many more that will do it. And I hope so. I mean, believe me, I have an older home and I love it. And we've maintained it as such. But I don't like the idea that you have the right to do something like this. It's wrong. And also, this is wrong. We should be in person in our town at council room discussing this sort of ordinance. And I ask you to move it out to when we can all meet in person in our council room. And I ask you to amend it to take out the designation that you declare who is designated as historic. Thank you very much for your time.
This is Lola. This is Councilman LaGriggo. I just wanted to say I did vote no on it.
We're just saying, no comment until public comment is over, so.
I did felt I could add that in. Thank you.
When this is closed, we can review it. Yeah?
Sorry, we want another speaker, Deirdre Jeline. Deirdre, are you there? Deirdre?
Yes, sorry. Deirdre Jeline, 131 North Euclid Avenue. Just wanted to say in response to what the previous speaker said, we've had this system, I guess, since the Historic Preservation Ordinance was first enacted, where it was voluntary. And we've seen during all this time, hundreds and hundreds of homes that have been torn down. And when the master plan, as part of master plan, the survey went out, as was previously mentioned, 80% of the residents said that they, or the respondents anyway to the survey, said that they didn't like that. And they didn't want to see the older homes in town continue to be torn down and the character of the town lost, which I definitely feel it has been. Over the last 10, 15 years, we've seen it eroded as more and more houses are torn down and they're just done without a thought. And yes, everyone does own their home, owns their property. But I feel when you move to a community like Westfield, hopefully, you're buying into a community and being part of the community, and you have a responsibility to help the community maintain itself. And so I hope that people will think about that and think about that. It's not just you in your house. It's the community that you're part of and that we all love and that we, most, many of us came here because we liked the historic ambiance of the community and we want to help maintain it. So I am definitely in favor of the ordinance. I would love to have my house designated. It is an older home, 1904. I don't know if it's historically significant. And I would love to see my whole block designated. And that's something I, I plan to work on. So I'm very much in support. And I want to thank you all for working on it. I also wanted to say that obviously with these amendments to the ordinance, the council has listened to the objections to some people and input from people. And it's extended the process for another month. So it's not going to be in the summer. It's going to be discussed next month in September. Of course, we'd all like to meet in the town council chambers, but that's really out of our control right now. We don't know when we'll be able to do that. So I just want to thank you all and say that I hope that people will think about that, think about the community as a whole, and how what we each do individually affects the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard? We have somebody.
I think Jim froze.
David?
And there's one person named David. It's not me.
Jim froze for a second, so.
Jim's frozen.
I got him.
Good.
David?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, thanks for your time. David, last name Trey, 104 Hazel Avenue. I really echo with, you know, the speaker and ladies. I think what we like or what we don't like really doesn't give other people's right to your own home, which you pay for. And you, you work for it. And you pay mortgage, you pay taxes. I don't think it's, it's the vote from the council six to three can overturn people's right. I used to be a bridge engineer. And in New York City, it's very difficult to preserve bridges for many reasons. I mean, most of the reason is because of the agent and function. More importantly, it's a safety concern. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of wondering why the 1920 or 1930 is, is really, you know, the topic to discuss the preservation for older homes. I think to preserve home, it has to have certain significance, not by year. You don't want to have a lot of old home and become a rundown or become, or become something not presentive. So it's very difficult to preserve or to maintain a historic home. It's very costly and it's a lot of restriction and limitation. So I, I'm not against the preservation, but you have to take it very seriously, not just by year. And also, you cannot take people's right because that could be their life saving. And they work for it and they may plan for it for their retirement, for, for whatever purpose they want to do. I don't think, I don't think any, any people, any people, any council people can just vote for it. Like I say, you can like something or dislike something, but doesn't mean you can vote for it or designate it for something people doesn't want. So I think you should give the right to the homeowner to have the final say. That, that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to be heard? Looking mayor, seeing no more people.
Okay, well, hearing or seeing no, I close this portion of the meeting. I do want to address those, some of the comments that we heard tonight, just to clarify a few things. First and foremost, I do want to thank Jackie Brevard and Marianne Healy Rodriguez for their announcement tonight that they had every intention of designating their homes. That's fantastic. And the couple things I heard, I think from Michael Blancato and from Liz Lowland, who talked about wanting to wait for a town hall, I actually couldn't disagree with that more. I think we've seen more participation via Zoom than quite frankly, what would actually fit in a, in a town hall. And, and, and as and more importantly, we don't know when we're going to get back in town hall. We were talking earlier that as of now, the most we could get in there with the current guidelines, we're at now it's only 25 people. So, and we don't know when that's going to change. So the business of our town has to continue through this pandemic and we just can't put things on hold. And I think Mr. Blancato made a point about, okay, well, some houses might be lost. Well, yes, exactly. If we wait. And he says, well, they can just work out something with historic preservation. The whole point is, most of these, we don't know that most of these houses are gone until they're already destroyed. There's nothing in there that requires them to notify the town unless some variance is required. So that is the entire point of this ordinance, that there's a notification requirement to make sure we can have that conversation before it gets turned down. And the other thing I think he mentioned about real estate taxes, and it reminds me of a conversation I had with actually a developer who came to my office, who said that we should be really grateful for all the teardowns because of what they're doing to improve real estate values. And I said, well, then by that measure, we should just tear down every house in town, right? If that's really what we're valuing. And, and I couldn't disagree with that, that enough, quite honestly. So I, I just wanted to comment on a few of those things. And, and, and I know a couple of folks here lived on Hazel Avenue. I said, Ms. Ratakowski was here. I, I think a quick check showed that maybe she lives in a 1930 home. And if that's true, she wouldn't even be subject to any of this pre-review demolition notification anyway. So, so I guess I would say, Dawn Mackey is, her councilwoman who lives on Hazel, you might just want to reach out to her to confirm when her house was built because a quick search that it was built in 1930. And, 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 and the last guy, David, also on Hazel Avenue, I think his comment was a bit of a misunderstanding about the ordinance. He, I think he was under the impression, at least that was my impression, is that any house pre 1930 was going to be designated. So Dawn, it sounds like he's also on your street. So maybe you want to circle back with him and may, and let him know that, no, that's actually not true at all. And the likelihood that anyone gets designated is slim to none. So if you just want to clarify with him, that would be great. So I think those are the notes that, that I had. And so.
Shelley, can I add one more thing? I think it's also important for the public to understand that part of the ordinance that I know people are uncomfortable with, which is.
David, I'm going to cut you off. Save your comment for when we get to the, to the discussion, if you don't mind. All right. Okay. So with that, we are going to move to bills and claims. So council and Havegood, you can move to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $1,461,941.92.
May I have a second?
Good, Councilman LaGriggo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports to standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. Council, Havegood?
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, I, I do have 17 resolutions that I'd like to move as a package tonight. But before I do that, I did want to just give a quick update to everyone about the state of the finances of the town. Because the Finance Committee, since we revised the budget after we decided it was prudent to do in light of the effects in the shutdown around the pandemic, the Finance Committee has been looking at progress against the budget on a monthly basis to ensure that we're aware of any areas where we might be falling short of where we expected to be by the end of the year. And I'm happy to report that not only have our tax collections been quite strong and very consistent with past years, but we're tracking very well against the budget as we're looking at it month to month and comparing it to not only last year, but the year before, in terms of revenue collections and expenses. So I wanted to make sure that people were that aware of that. And now I will get into my 17 resolutions. I'll try to move, I'll try to read them quickly. The first, the first is a resolution, CFO to draw warrant for the first quarter construction officials state permit fees for 2020. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for second quarter construction officials state permit fees for 2020. The third, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for unused parking permit fee. Number four, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a check for the balance of escrow monies. The fifth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for dog licenses for July 2020. Sixth, a resolution authorizing the CFO for refund of dumpster security payment. The seventh, resolution authorizing the CFO to refund recreation department fees. Eighth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for overpaid taxes in 2020. Nine, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for 2019 pursuant to the Tax Court of New Jersey. The 10th, resolution authorizing an award of contract for purchase and installation of playground equipment in Sycamore Park. 11, a resolution to approve insertion of special item of revenue in the municipal budget for a sustainable Jersey grant. The 12th, a resolution to approve insertion of a special item of revenue in the municipal budget, the kids recreation grant. 13, a resolution to approve insertion of special item of revenue in the municipal budget for a greening Union County grant. We like seeing all those grants. A resolution to rescind resolution number 138 through dash 2020, insertion of special item of revenue in the municipal budget for body armor. The 15th, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for risk management consultant fee. 16, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for Union County and Union County open space taxes. And 17, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw issue warrants for special district taxes.
May I have a second?
Contract.
Not good by contract. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee, Councilwoman Mackey.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution, designate an area of this town of Westfield, as more particularly described herein, as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, Lord and Taylor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor Brenda will be voting no, as I feel this is a gateway into pilot programs. And I feel we should have had more discussion on this.
Mark, can you just explain your objection to, like, your understanding and objections of pilots? Because, and just to be clear and to reiterate what Phil said from topology, that this only allows any conversation to happen, which may or may not include a pilot. So.
Yeah, but I.
Can I finish? So, so really, your vote against even the conversation means you're a vote against really any type of improvement on the Lord and Taylor properties.
I know, I know you're for pilot programs. So that's not the direction that I believe the town should go.
I'm just curious. So this is not a vote on pilot. This is a vote on whether or not you want to see any improvement on the Lord and Taylor property. So I just want to be clear.
Well, I feel there should be more discussion on the subject.
But this is what enables the discussion. So that's why I'm just curious.
Yeah, but you got, Mayor Brenda, I mean, it's been a pandemic, people are on vacation. It's not the right time to be discussing this.
This is, because discussion hasn't started. This is what enables a discussion to start. So, and I, I just, I just want you to go on the record. This is.
Yeah, well, I told you how I'm voting, voting. So you know how I'm going on the record.
That's, I just.
That's how it works.
I just wanted to be, no, absolutely. I just, I was just wondering why you weren't in support.
I mean, you won't let people speak during the council meeting. But, you know, when you have a question, it's okay though, right?
Well, the mayor is the head of the, head of the council.
But you have to remember, we're all elected officials as well.
Understood. But I was just looking for some context behind your vote. So thank you. That's totally fine.
Well, you're.
Yeah. Okay. So please call the roll.
Good.
Sally, call the roll. Yeah, she's up.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yeah.
Councilman LaGriggo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Mayor, on the advice of the town attorney, and noting that my wife is the chair of the HPC, I will be recusing myself on this vote. Not for the existence of a conflict of interest, but for the appearance of a conflict.
I'm sorry, Councilman Boys, were you, were you, did you mean for the redevelopment designation or for the historic preservation?
for the redevelopment designation or for the historic preservation?
I'm sorry, yeah, I meant for the historic. Sorry about that, yeah, you know what? Sorry. On this matter, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mayor Brendel.
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution designated in the area of the town of Westfield as more particularly described herein as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to local redevelopment and housing law, Rialto.
May I have a second?
Second, have good.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrigpo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yeah.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
This, this, this one we're doing.
No, this is the Rialto.
No, Rialto. And we're in Westfield.
Yes.
Mayor Brendel.
Yes, this motion is carried.
Lastly, I would like to move General Ordinance number two one eight eight on first reading, an ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the demolition requirement of the town code. Did I skip one?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back. Next, I would like to make a motion to amend General Ordinance number two one eight three on first reading, an ordinance establishing a Historic Preservation Commission and providing for the designation and preservation of historic districts and historic landmarks in the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second, have good.
Any discussion?
Mayor Brendel will be voting no as, again, I believe the town has oversight as far as making this an historic district without the owner's consent. And just curious, Maria Boy has been on the chair of the HPC for a while. Now Councilman Boys is going to be voting no. Just wondering why he didn't vote no in previously.
I don't think he said he was voting no. I think he said he was recusing himself.
Right, well, how come he hasn't, just curious, how come he didn't do that in the past? You know?
Just based on advice I got.
Advice, legal advice, or just curious?
Yes, legal.
Okay, well, previously, just curious, how come you didn't recuse yourself in the past?
I don't think.
Question. I don't, Councilman LaGrigpo, I don't know whether I want to go into what legal advice Councilman Boys has been given. But suffice it to say that an introduction of an ordinance doesn't require recusal because you're only introduction, introducing an ordinance, not adopting it. But beyond that, whether or not the Councilman Boys recuses himself is is his prerogative. Whether it's legally required or not, it's his prerogative.
I was just curious, he didn't do it previously, that's all.
So any other discussion? So please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrigpo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yeah.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
As I noted, I will be recusing.
Mayor Brendel.
Yes, this motion is carried.
Amendment to General Ordinance number two one eight three, the ordinance will be reapartized and a public hearing will be held on December eighth, twenty twenty. I would like to move for the adoption of a resolution amending General Ordinance number two one eight three relating to historic preservation.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrigpo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
You know, I couldn't hear Dawn when she was. Which ordinance is this? This is the resolution to amend the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So you should recuse yourself on this as well.
Yeah, you should recuse yourself.
So noted, accusing.
Mayor Brendel.
Yes, this motion is carried.
Lastly, I would like to move General Ordinance number two one eight eight on first reading, an ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the demolition requirement of the town code.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's a good Dardia, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes. Yes.
LaGrigpo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yeah.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel.
Yes, this motion is carried. And last is the Public Works Committee, Council and Contract.
I'd like to move a resolution authorizing a contract for EV charging stations.
May I have a second?
Back to LaGrigpo.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. And finally, may I have a motion to adjourn?
The move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.